The Committee on Finance and Taxation, General Government Operations, and Youth Development now convenes this hearing. In accordance with the open government law, public notices for today's proceedings were sent to the media on November 17th, 2015, and again on November 23rd, 2015. For the record, today is Wednesday, November 25th, 2015, and the time is now 2:06. The committee will hear and accept testimony, both oral and written, on several items. The first item is Bill Number 187-33COR. Second item is Bill Number 208-33LS. And we are also hearing the nomination of Mr. Richard W. Hamlin for the position of Member Alcohol Beverage Control Board with a length of term of two years. And what I'm going to do is I am going to go slightly out of order from the agenda and in the interest of hearing some testimony for people that had expressed an interest in being here today, I'm going to skip the order and I'm going to go straight to the nomination of Mr. Richard Hamlin. I'd also like to, before we begin, acknowledge the presence of other members of the legislature who have joined me here today. To my right is Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz, and to my immediate left is Speaker Judith Wanpat, and to her left is Senator Nerissa Underwood. So on the nomination of Mr. Richard Hamlin, I'd like to invite you to please come up. Mr. Hamlin, if you don't mind, I'd like to invite other people who have signed up to testify to accompany you. Do you mind that they accompany you at the table?
Please.
Okay. So I'd like to call up members who have signed up to testify. Mr. Ray Loretta and Ms. Belinda. Well, I'm having trouble reading this.
It's my question. Bing?
Bing?
Yes.
Mahina?
Yes.
Excuse me, I...
No problem.
Yes, please join us at the table if you will. Mr. Leonetta. Thank you for joining us. We will now hear testimony on the nomination of Richard W. Hamlin to serve as a member of the Alcohol Beverage Control Board. I will open the floor to members of the public wishing to testify on the nomination before bringing forward the nominee to present his testimony. Actually, in this case, I brought the nominee up to present his testimony first. So if we may begin, Mr. Leonetta, would you like to begin your testimony if you'd like?
Good afternoon, Madam Speaker, Mr. Vice Speaker, and Senators. My name is Rainey A. Leonetta, better known as Ray. I'm here as the...I'm the vice chair of the ABC Board, and I'm also the acting chair for now until one is appointed by the governor. So I'm here before you to basically express my opportunity to say that Mr. Richard Hamlin, an attorney, in his appointment as a member of the ABC Board, I would like to say that, you know, please vote for him and include him into our team. Ms. Bing Mahia after me will also have an opportunity to speak, but that will complement the five that we need for the ABC Board. And that we intend to do some great things. I've known Mr. Hamlin only for a few months. We went to the Philippines together on a Guam trade mission to the Philippines, and from what I've seen in his character, his behavior, his ability to articulate himself, I think he will greatly enhance our ability to do well for the people of Guam. And so Bing and I are here in support of his nomination and our encouragement that you allow him to become a member of our team. We're really very excited to have him. I think he's really very excited to be with us. We're formulating a great team for the island, and we need him. So please allow him to be a part of our team. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leonetta. Ms. Mahia, if you please.
Good afternoon, Senators. I am Bing Mahia. I am the longest member of the ABC Board, having served the government of Guam for three consecutive terms, one from the former Governor Camacho, and right now two terms for Governor Calvo. I came here to support the nomination of Attorney Richard Hamlin because right now at the Board, we have the aggressiveness, we have the hard worker. What we miss is the legal side of interpreting certain issues that we cannot just interpret immediately on a Board meeting. By having Mr. Hamlin on Board, it will be a lot faster for us to look at certain legal terms, legal issues that's, you know, causing delay in our decision-making. The Board is basically making a lot of changes. We have already started aggressively on implementing the alcohol server program. In fact, we have already considered two alcohol server training programs that will soon be implemented. So at the moment, I think we are moving at a faster pace than we were, than we used to be. And by having a very forthright lawyer in Attorney Hamlin here, who will help us, you know, move, you know, our issues faster, that's the reason why I came here, to fully support the nomination of Attorney Hamlin. Thank you.
Thank you. I just had one question. Have you had a delay in your...in being able to meet, and is there a backlog in some of the business of the ABC Board presently?
Presently, no. I'm sorry. Presently, no. But in the past, we've had issues with quorum and things like that, but we're working together as a team, actually, to ensure that there is coverage every month and that we are able to meet the demands of the licensure and allowing businesses to be able to function. Our mission as a team is to ensure that we don't hamper the businesses and the government. And we're trying very, very hard to do that, and I believe having the Fifth to fully complement us, there will be no issues with not being able to hold a quorum.
Thank you.
May I add to that? This Board has been working so hard that our November and December meetings should have happened like on the holidays. What we did was, I motioned to move all the Board meetings a week ahead of the holidays so that there will be no canceled meetings. That's how fast we're doing it now, and the commitment that we have to make changes of this Board.
Thank you. We appreciate your concern. That's certainly what the people also appreciate in our Board members. But I want to ask any of my colleagues, do you have any questions for the...yes, Speaker?
Thank you very much. You mentioned earlier that in your testimony, that, you know, the need, of course, of having, you know, Mr. Hamlin with a legal background because you're making changes, and I'm wondering, what are the changes being made? Are they the rules and regs, policies, what?
It's not really changes, but you know, there are certain, you know, legal aspects of the book that before we can do something, the next issue is to, oh, we have to go back to the AG to ask for an opinion, because no one can say yes or no, or what we need to do. So we have to ask the director or write the director, and then the director goes to the AG or we go to the AG. But with a lawyer, maybe he can quickly tell us that, okay, that's, we can do that, and then maybe he can directly communicate. He will be helping us or guide us in any legal issues.
I would like to add and give you a recent example. Maybe you'll hone in better when you hear this, but one of the issues that we ran into with the ABC Board is that the ABC compliance team, the full-time staff, recently disposed of alcohol that's been sitting for like 10 to 20 years, you know? And as we know with alcohol, the older it is, to most people, it tastes better, or it's valued more. And they disposed of it, where they took it and they put it into the sewer system. And our thought, actually it was Bing who had that thought, is, you know, why don't we auction it? Why don't we sell it? So that the government will make money, people will be able to use it, the government will make money, so it's a win-win situation instead of dumping it. And so that's kind of the thing that we were discussing as a Board, and we didn't know what the legal parameters are, but we're going to go before, go through the system, write a letter and say, hey, instead of wasting it, let's auction it so that the government will make some money out of it, and then people will be able to use it. But something like that, you know, maybe Attorney Hamlin would be able to help us put the right verbiage into the letter so that it, you know, it sounds nicer or better. That kind of stuff, you know, the legal aspects of how to do certain things. And so we think that that would be a lot more useful for us.
Well, I'm glad then you're thinking in those lines, but you also need to make sure whether, you know, your Board is authorized to, you know, either...because we've done that with other Boards or agencies, where there would be authorized to even solicit or, you know, if it's a sale or what have you. So you've got to make sure that that is in your authorization bylaw. And of course, usually there's a, the AAA process for rules and regulations that, you know, needs to be amended, that you follow that process as well.
Yes.
If it's your booklet, your handbook, that maybe you're going to give to all the businesses, maybe that can be still within your purview, but you know, you're right, you're going to need Mr. Hamlin's assistance to be able to do that, so...
As a Board, we understand that there's a legal way to ask questions through the AG's office, through the Guam system. And we're not thinking of Attorney Hamlin's using his legal opinion to steer the Board a certain way, but for him to give us his advice and opinion, and then as a Board, we could streamline the process of going to the AG's office to get the official legal opinion, right? So we think that his knowledge will actually help us streamline that a lot quicker and more efficiently. Because in the past, the ABC Board has run into some issues with going out there into the businesses and actually closing down establishments because of this and that. And had they had someone who was familiar with the legal ramifications of doing that, they would not have gotten into trouble. So we feel that, hey, he's going to keep us out of trouble to ensure that we do things legally and in the right, in the right way. But we're not seeing him as our legal advisor, no. We see the AG's office as our official legal advisor. We just see him as someone who can streamline the process and give us advice on how to go about asking the right questions the right way.
And I'm glad you clarified that, because he is being appointed to be a member of the Board and not necessarily to provide, you know, legal opinions.
Oh, no. Yes.
And that, you're right, you have to go to the Attorney General's Office. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Senator Underwood, you're good? Okay. All right, well, thank you very much for providing testimony, and you may take your seats if you'd like. Attorney Hamlin, I'd like to welcome you to make some statements regarding your nomination to the Alcohol Beverage Control Board.
Thank you, Senator, Speaker, Vice Speaker, Senator. Again, my name is Richard Hamlin. I am a member of the Guam Bar Association, and I do look forward to leveraging my professional experience, which has been devoted to immigration and business law, which involves a number of issues of statutory construction and interpretation, to apply it to serve our island through this Board position by executing my duties in a transparent, equitable, and faithful manner to the rule and spirit of these applicable laws. In line with that, and in my experience with my career, I'm very cognizant of the number of businesses that are affected by the regulations put before the ABC Board. Consequently, it's going to be one of my goals to ensure that these regulations are handled in an equitable, transparent, and efficient manner. To that end, I'm open to any questions you may have about my experience, qualifications, or motivations.
So I'd like to...first of all, I appreciate the fact that you're an attorney, and I think that when you've got a composite within a Board, it's always good to have a nice mix of expertise and knowledge and practicality. And I want to ask you, with regard to the issuance of licenses, have you had any thoughts? It's been brought up to me by some business owners that were desirous of starting businesses in Tumon, that the number of licenses that are issued, the law provides that there's a certain number of licenses that shall be issued. There's a ratio that's permitted, and it has to do with the number of residents within a community. And which sounds right and reasonable, but when you take a community like Tumon or Tamooning, where the population includes a transient population, not a fixed population that's determined by the census or any other official means, but a transient population that spends an average of 3.5 days on Guam, and also spends a great majority of their time in the entertainment realm of Guam, which includes establishments that either sell alcohol over a bar or a restaurant, or also those establishments that have, you know, certain alcoholic products on the shelves for sale. What are your thoughts on that ratio and whether that's an issue that could be revisited, given the fact that perhaps the needs within one area are more than what the ratio prescribes? In other words, you can't have too many establishments, or perhaps there could be more establishments and businesses of different varieties to cater to that transient population. Do you have any thoughts on that?
I agree that there is a disparity in economic development between the villages, particularly in the area of Tumon versus, say, in Arahan, where there is a definite population difference. And generally speaking, a one-size-fits-all rule is ripe for inequitable results. And in going forward for the adjudication of any license applications before me, obviously I'll look at the individual facts of the application. And I think it's important that the legislature look at the individual situations facing every different economic area of the island separately, and may wish to revisit that through a bill, a separate bill. I understand, perhaps previously Senator San Nicholas proposed a bill addressing that. I'm not sure the current status of that action. However, until new legislation is passed and approved, my duties would be to uphold the rule and spirit of the legislation. I understand that there is some discretion when defining different types of licenses, and there are different caps between the different types of licenses. Accordingly, some businesses may wish to be re-categorized, or new businesses categorized separately. I think the root of the issue that you address, though, is one that's best addressed through legislation specific to it. However, in my duties, I shall adjudicate the applications with an eye towards the economic implications.
And we would expect no less of you, obviously, but the...and the reason I ask is we have a delicate balance in this small community of not upsetting the quality of life for the residents. You know, we don't want to have an over propensity of bars and types of establishments that attract a certain type of visitor to a community, which would disrupt things and also disrupt traffic patterns. But at the same time, too, we have to also be realistic about the fact that we are a destination, and that with destination comes certain entertainment expectations, right, of a community. So it is a delicate balance, and I appreciate that you're, you at least understand the sensitivities and the need to maybe weigh and balance things, because we do have a, we have an economic aspiration to grow certain things and have different entrepreneurs thrive, right? But at the same time, too, we don't want to lose the essence that makes us attractive, so...but yeah, I look forward to, in the event that legislation should come out where that specific statute in 11 GCA is addressed, that we have dialogue with you, because I certainly would value your input as regulators as well. I'd value your input on what the impact of lifting certain caps might be on the community. Thank you. Would any of my colleagues care to ask questions?
Thank you very much. There is currently a law that states that bars or even stores who sell alcohol, serve or sell alcohol, should not be within 500 feet where there are churches and schools. And so it's a twofold question. One would be, do you know if that is currently being enforced? And the second is, there were, there was several bills actually in other legislatures that had been introduced to include daycare centers and childcare centers, and I wanted to know what your thoughts are with, you know, not just schools, but the inclusion of daycare facilities for children.
Well, regarding the current enforcement, I look forward to as joining as a member of this Board, getting up to speed on the current status of all enforcement measures and anything that's behind in enforcement. Regarding the implications of a new bill, obviously, if there's any new legislation, I shall dutifully execute my positions in line with the terms of that legislation. Regarding the current statute that governs the location of licenses near schools and hospitals, I believe, churches, I understand there's also an exception in that statute. I would need to have it in front of me to analyze it completely, however, the exception, as I recall, deals with whether or not the alcoholic district sellers, license holders, are disturbing the activities of the school, and it depends on traffic flow, noise. Obviously, we don't need drunk people around children trying to study, but on the other hand, that's often not the case for many businesses. So I would be cognizant that perhaps a unscrupulous competitor could set up a faux daycare license in a spot to keep out another license holder. So there is always a flip side to any legislation, and I would look at both sides of the equation in addressing it.
We're actually televised here, so just tell us a little bit more about yourself and what brought you here to Guam.
First came to Guam almost 10 years ago, I believe, 2006. I worked in a law firm, Berman O'Connor &amp; Mann. I developed a specialty in immigration law. I found Guam to be home for me, longest I've ever lived anywhere, actually, and it has been my home for almost the past 10 years. Immigration and business with an international focus has been one of the most gratifying aspects of my career, and this jurisdiction is uniquely international with the composition of its population, its business leaders, and its disposition in the world and throughout history. So I found it a unique place that I've grown to love. I'm involved with a number of pro bono immigration assistance efforts, and most of my business is international, again, as I said, dealing with immigration law. This being the US jurisdiction closest to Asia, I believe it should be the gateway for Asian investment into the US. So one of the unique aspects of Guam has been raised recently. I was in Shanghai with the Guam Economic Development Authority trade mission to Shanghai Pudong, and the TPP, Trans-Pacific Partnership Agreement, was signed as we were there in Shanghai. That is a major concern for a lot of executives and exporters in China. However, Guam is in a very unique position under the TPP, having control of its own customs. It's just one of the many examples of how Guam is a fascinating and compelling legal jurisdiction to practice and live in.
Thank you for that. And so I'm sure that you had already spoken with a couple of the members of the Board, and you have a sense about what the roles and responsibilities are. What do you think are maybe two of the top issues that are confronting the Board at this point?
I believe, and this could be a bias of me against large organizations, but I believe efficiency is always a challenge for any organization, and particularly one tasked with adjudicating as many applications as the Board has before it. So I would, one, focus and make it a goal, whether or not it is a shortcoming now, of ensuring that matters are handled expeditiously, but also equitably. Also, I think it's one of the other issues facing the Board that I've just understood through my history here on the island, is public awareness and understanding of the regulations by which the ABC Board conducts themselves. A goal of my position would be to ensure that proper regulations, if not already promulgated according to the legal process, are written down and promulgated, and that's part of transparency, which I believe is important for good governance.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Attorney Hamlin. If there are no more individuals wishing to testify today, I will now conclude the hearing on the nomination of Mr. Hamlin for the Alcohol Beverage Control Board. Thank you very much for coming today. It was a pleasure to meet you, and we will certainly give your nomination a very favorable consideration.
Thank you, Senators.
Returning to the agenda, the committee will hear and accept testimony, both oral and written, on the following items. Bill Number 187-33COR, introduced by Vice Speaker Benjamin J. Cruz. I would like to invite the author of the bill, if you may, to not only read the title of the bill, but to discuss the bill and introduction of it.
Actually, Madam Chair, if I might, I'd like to ask that this be taken off the calendar and rescheduled so that I can have the Board of Accountancy come and testify.
Okay.
There is no major urgency to this piece of legislation. They submitted it to us, but if they're not here today, I really don't think that I feel confident to discuss it, and I want them here to explain why they want these amendments. So if you would, ask the Chairman to reschedule this to a later date, I would appreciate that.
Okay. And for the benefit of the listening audience, I would at least like to read the title of the bill that we're referring to. Bill Number 187-33COR, which is introduced by Vice Speaker Cruz, is an Act to amend Chapter 35, Title 22 of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to the Guam Accountancy Act of 2003, and to repeal and... and to repeal and reenact Title 25, I'm sorry, Title 25, Chapter 2 of the Guam Administrative Rules, Relative to Policies Within the Administrative Rules and Regulations of the Guam Board of Accountancy. And on that, that request, I will, I will bring this matter to the chairman, I mean, to the, to the committee chair for action, taking it off the calendar until a later moment, until later time. And so we will then move on to the second item on the agenda, which is Bill Number 208-33LS, introduced by Speaker Judith T. Wannpad EDD. And if I may ask the, the good speaker to read the title of the bill and to speak on the matter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill Number 208, release an Act to amend Section 58104 of Chapter 58, Division 5, Title 5, the Guam Code Annotated. And it is relative to the refinancing of the government of Guam's obligations with respect to the Guam Education Financial Foundation GIF certificates of participation of Series 2006A, the Guam Education Financing Foundation certificates of participation of Series 2006B, and the Guam Education Foundation certificates of participation Series 208. When this bill was passed and basically authorizing GIF officials to, to move forward in the refinancing to provide some savings for our lease schools, what had happened, and they came, they made a visit to the island and met with the chairman himself and myself as well, basically saying that part of the bill that was amended by the chapter of adding a fifth requirement, the committee had recommended five requirements, but the fifth requirement states that any refinancing of such certificates of participation shall bear interest at such rates and be sold for such price or prices as shall result in a yield to certificate holders that does not exceed 3% per annum. The officials pointed out that the language in this fifth requirement inadvertently prohibits them certificates from being marketed to investors, because during the entire period of financing for these projects, some certificates will yield interest rates below 3%, while others may yield an interest rate in excess of 3%. However, throughout the entire duration of the projects, the, the life of that lease will be, is 10 years, that the interest rates, rate will average approximately 3%. Because some periods may yield an interest rate in excess of 3%, the language in the fifth requirement would prevent the refunding. The original intent of the amendment was to ensure that there was a minimum savings of at least 2% at each COP refinancing. This is ensured with a language in the law in the third requirement of the original amendment, and it reads that the present value in the aggregate of debt service with respect to the government's obligations, with respect to such leases or amendments to leave, shall be at least 2% less than the present value in the aggregate of debt service on the refunded 2006 and 2008 certificates, using the yield on the refunding bonds at the discounted rate. So as such, then, by removing then the fifth requirement would achieve the outcome we originally anticipated when we passed it during our last session. So I'm hoping, and, and there's also a, if I may add, a letter from actually the chairman of GIF, Mr. Richard Inman, basically reiterating what I've just shared with the committee in support of the deletion of Section 5 of the, of the law.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Would any of my senators have any comments or questions? No? Okay. There were no individuals who signed up to testify on this bill at today's hearing. As the speaker had mentioned previously, there was one written submission by Mr. Richard Inman of the Guam Education Financing Foundation certificate, which will go into the, the committee report. And being that, that there are no individuals who signed up, I would like to now conclude the hearing on Bill Number 208-33LS. For the benefit of all those who may be listening, please be aware that the committee will continue to receive testimony on the items heard today, well, actually, on, on this one bill heard today, because the other will be referred back to committee, and on the nomination of Attorney Hamlin to the Alcohol Beverage Control Board. Please address any written testimony to the Committee on Finance and Taxation, General Government Operations, and Youth Development. And you may submit also via electronic mail to Senator San Nicolas's Gmail account, or hand-deliver any testimony to the legislature's mailroom, or to Suite 407 at the DNA Building in Hagatna. I'd like to thank all of those who appeared today to testify on the nomination of Attorney Hamlin, and I'd also like to thank the senators who were here today with me at this public hearing. This hearing is now adjourned. Thank you, and happy Thanksgiving to everyone. May God continue to bless all of us. Sidoos Maasi.